I don't know. There's something on here about driver's license.
I suppose it's time for them to get into their surplus. I was surprised to hear they had that many.
At least for the Christmas decorations. Can you take that out?
I'm going to call the meeting to order. It's five minutes after four, July 25th. Call roll please.
Mayor Crawford.
Here.
Commissioner Blanchard.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hardy.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Yes, and would you join us for the pledge of allegiance in moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any words and proclamations. Citizens forum, this is a chance for any citizen to come up and speak regarding an item that is not on the agenda. Okay. We'll go on to public hearings and items scheduled for a certain time.
Five point one, comments on the proposed 2017 budget.
Are there any comments on the 2017 budget? Any public comment? Okay. Public hearings closed, so no comments. Consent agenda?
Item six point one, approve the minutes of July 18th, 2016. Item six point two, approve the minutes of July 19th, 2016. Item six point three, resolution, approve resolution number 167386, appointing members to the Saline County Community Corrections Advisory Board. And item six point four, consider recommendations for grant fund allocation to local agencies for the 2016 Kansas Emergency Solutions Grant.
Okay. Is there anything any commissioner would like to have pulled from the consent agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve consent agenda?
Do we approve the consent agenda as presented?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
It was opposed, same sign. Administration?
Item seven point one, second reading ordinance number 16-10844, requesting annexation of the remaining unannexed portion of South Ohio Street, south of Schilling Road.
Andy. There's no ord- ordinance number 1610844 was passed on first reading on July 18th, 2016. Since that time, no comments have been received. Need a motion to approve.
Public comment?
Ordinance number 1610844.
I move we approve, approve on second reading, ordinance number 1610844.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve, ordinance number 1610844. Roll call please.
Commissioner Blanchard.
Aye.
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Hardy.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Crawford.
Aye. Motion carries, five oh.
Item seven point two, authorize publication of the notice of budget hearing for the 2017 budget, which sets August 8th and August 15th as the dates of public hearings on the 2017 budget and establishes the maximum limits of the 2017 budget.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. As you know, the budget process for municipalities in the state of Kansas is governed by state statute. State statute requires a formal public hearing be held on the proposed budget and published at least 10 days prior to that hearing. We are actually proposing to do two hearings on August 8th and August 15th. In addition to the opportunity today and next Monday for public comment, there will be official public hearings on the 8th and the 15th that will allow adequate opportunity for members of the public to comment on the budget. Along with the formal notice that gets published is a budget summary that outlines the maximum mill levy that the city can implement for the 2017 budget. We are proposing to keep it at 27.311, which is the same levy imposed currently for 2016. Once this notice is published, the mill levy cannot be increased, it can always be decreased. These numbers can go down, but after the approval today, it, they cannot go up. Basically what we're asking is to authorize the publication of the notice of public hearing for the 2017 budget to set August 8th and August 15th as dates for public hearings on the 2017 budget and establish the maximum mill levy for the 2017 budget at 27.311 mills.
Okay. Any questions of Michelle? No questions.
Okay, thank you.
That's good. Will I entertain a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move to authorize publication of the notice of budget hearing for the 2017 budget, which is setting August 8th and the August 15th as the dates for public hearings on the 2017 budget and establishing maximum limits of the 2017 budgets.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to authorize publication of the notice of budget hearing for the 2017 budget, which sets August 8th and August 15th as the dates of public hearings on the 2017 budget and establishes the maximum limits of the 2017 budget. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes, five oh.
Item seven point three, request to authorize staff to prepare a special assessment engineering feasibility report for Phase Two of the Grand Prairie addition.
Mr. Stack.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. This is the second phase of the Grand Prairie subdivision addition that's between the municipal golf course and Cedar Ridge Drive. It's part of the Gray's Family Trust that was dedicated, part of the golf course and the area out there to the city many years ago. They purchased it and developed it in cooperation with the city with a preliminary plat approved back in February of 2008 and then decided to develop a 34 lot subdivision portion of the 70 lot total subdivision in 2009, 2010 and have built out approximately 22 of the 34 lots sold and Mr. Shepherd being the main developer here now says they've sold one more, so they're down to 11 lots remaining. So they feel like it's time to pursue the second phase of 17 more lots, which gives them, as they move to the north, the next, their water system's already in, the storm sewer detention portion has already been built and those are currently being assessed to these lots already. So now they're looking for, this request is really to have a special assessment feasibility study to build the streets and the sanitary sewer connections basically to the system that's already there. Basically we have, as you know, the years, last couple of years, we've had the option from shall, will to shall, so you have the option to pursue direct staff to basically prepare this feasibility study or not. So Mr. Shepherd is here today to answer any questions she would have. This would be a, just really continuation of the last feasibility study we did for this portion, so we don't feel like it's a lot of staff time, but it is your prerogative and you have to let us know if you want us to do it or not. So I'll stand for questions.
I have just a quick question for staff on, in the blue sheet you have Phase One. Says it's approaching build out, 22 of 34 lots.
Yep.
Sold, I drove through there over the weekend and noticed that there were 15 homes.
Right.
Either built or under construction. Are there seven other homes that have building permits pending or?
I don't know about the building permits, they're just not in Cornerstone's name anymore. They've been built or bought by somebody else besides Cornerstone, so they've sold.
Is Cornerstone building lots, building houses on lots that they own?
I believe so, you can ask. I mean, there's other people, you can ask Bill, but there's other builders in there and there's other owners that own the lots that haven't, either haven't built yet or are going to or just haven't yet, but they've bought the lot from Cornerstone, so that's all, that's about what I could look up. Bill might be able to tell you more about the, about where the building is going or how many more are headed in that direction.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Shepherd?
Bill Shepherd, 430 Greystone, Salina, Kansas. Here, I can answer any questions you have in reference to Grand Prairie.
Yeah, thanks for being here. And the question that I had before, are you guys also, are you builder-developers? So are you holding some of these, holding a number of these lots for your own purposes?
I do build. I build under a separate name, but Cornerstone Development Group. Currently we have 11 lots left. There's probably two lots I probably, that I have in mind that I'll probably keep. There's some that I'm, that aren't sold that we're working with customers on. There's several lots that we've sold this year that, to individuals that are in the planning process, so.
Are you, out of the 22 lots that are sold, are those all to other people then?
That's correct.
I mean, those aren't, none of those are Cornerstone.
Yeah, I own 11 lots left right now.
Okay. All right. And then, on these, you know, we have the policy that is there to promote growth and so on. Are you, are you availing yourselves of this, of specials because you need to or because it's available and you choose to pursue that?
I need to.
You need to, okay.
Yes, sir.
There's a need there, okay.
Yep.
All right.
Any other questions?
When you, I want to speak a little bit to absorption of this, of these lots, because you've been doing Grand Prairie for what, six or seven?
Yeah, I mean, from the time we started selling lots, yeah, probably six years.
Did they, were the sales a little quicker out of the gate and slowing down a little or has it been pretty even?
You know, it's been pretty steady.
About four a year?
I mean, our initial, I mean, this year's been really good. Our initial year, probably sold three or four, but it's been steady. We've had probably more interest this year than any.
And what are the, on the existing lots, what are the, what is the, how much are the specials roughly and average wise? 35?
32,000.
32,000?
Well, we paid about approximately a third of them. I don't know what's left.
I mean originally.
Oh, yeah, originally, that's correct, yes.
So it'd be somewhere in the vicinity of?
Probably 20.
You would anticipate that?
Yeah.
Okay, and do you have, do you have protective covenants?
We do.
Very good.
Anything else?
Questions?
I have no further questions.
Thank you, Mr. Shepherd.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion on item seven point two.
Madam Chairman, I move we authorize staff to prepare the engineering feasibility report and resolution of advisability for Phase Two of the Grand Prairie addition for future consideration by the City Commission. Second.
There's a motion and a second to authorize staff to prepare an engineering feasibility report and resolution of advisability for Phase Two of the Grand Prairie addition. All in favor say aye.
Can we have a discussion, Mayor?
Go ahead.
Okay, I have a question for staff on this and then also from other Commissioners. Do we, we know within this subdivision what the number available is, you know, that there's 11 more available. What is the number of vacant lots in this, because this price range is roughly from what, 300 to 350? The homes in that?
I think somewhere in there. I'd have to defer to Mr. Shepherd on the range to date, but of course, we know we have 34 buildable lots in Phase One. I didn't do a count, if you did a count and he said 15, and let's say 15 or 16, whatever, that's probably pretty close then. We're probably looking at about 18, 19, somewhere in there, 19-ish. I don't, again, I don't know what's being planned to be built on right now either, so I, I'm not sure how accurate that is as far as when we say unbuilt lots versus in the planning process of being, truly being built with dirt turned sometime this year. I don't know that answer. I don't know, I'll defer to Gary if he knows, but.
Well, and my question really isn't to that, because I think that, my guess would be that they're probably still going to break ground on maybe one or two more of those if that's, if they're all sold and people aren't just buying them to hold them, so I wouldn't expect that this year is probably over on there. But I'm talking about Salina's, the market for lots of that size that would have comparable homes built on them. I mean, they're not what we would call in the 185 to 225 range.
Right.
Typically.
That's correct, yeah.
And so, you know, so I didn't call that affordable. But my question is this, is that do we, have we yet, because I know it's been asked a few times, do we yet have an idea of what the number in inventory and absorption rate of those lots are? Because I like these lots out here because they actually have an amenity that is adding value to those lots. My concern is that we have an inventory of that size lot that we already have specials on and everything else that we're already in the process with. And in particular, we have Stone Lake that's been there since 2013 and I think they've sold one house and we haven't been collecting any property taxes on any of those. And so it's really difficult to continue with that level of, let's do special assessments full on for the more expensive homes, when we have an inventory that's quite large in that category. And so, is there any way we can get some accounting of that is my question for staff?
Yeah, we had that, I think we had a pretty good accounting of available lots in multiple subdivisions in one of our studies, or the presentation, one of our study sessions.
Yeah, I think it was around 100.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have that in front of me, so I don't want to make a mistake with that, but maybe Dan, it looks like he's looking at something right there. It's on the, the study session from a few weeks ago, really, I was just looking to see, but number of available lots in Stone Lake and River Run, Highland Meadows, so there's about 169, 160, you're about right, 169 lots total.
169?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
It might be a good question to ask Mr. Shepherd if he doesn't mind, kind of how he sees his price points range sort of comparing to those. I wouldn't want to accidentally mischaracterize that subdivision versus some of those others.
I appreciate that, yeah.
As far as, so what's, what's the question then?
Well, in looking at, we've got a number of subdivisions throughout the city that other builders have come and put special assessment financing into place on these. And according to Mr. Stack, there's 169 roughly that we've calculated and I think comparable lots that would have comparable homes on them, and I think those homes probably range from 260, 275 to 325 or something.
Are these buildable lots or they just platted?
Well, those are, those are lots with utilities already in place. I don't know what the platted lots, I assume there may be a few more, but I think what the question that I had was, that the city manager had asked, would it be fair to characterize the houses that in your development as in a range of 275 to 325? Or would they be?
No, they're, you know what, most of ours is going to start, more.
Oh, they're more expensive than that?
Probably 350 and up. I mean, we've had, we've had some people spend upwards of close to $1 million.
Okay.
I mean, by choice, but.
Well, it's got a great amenity there, the golf course.
The additional lots I'm wanting to open up, there's 17, three of them I do not own, a previous partner owns those, so I actually own, I'll own 14 of those, but every one of them's on the golf course and that's, that's where our demand's at. And some of them are walkouts. So what we have left in Phase One is our least desirable lots, which is probably why I'll end up building on some of them. I've got some of them verbally spoke for.
They're kind of more the landlocked ones it looked like.
Yeah.
That they don't have.
They're still great lots.
Right, they don't have frontage.
Yeah, and we've spent a lot, we just got done spending about another $50,000 on landscaping our medians, if you want to go out and take a look at it.
They look good, I drove through, they look good.
We just, we just got that done last week and the signs and so, we're putting a lot of money into it to make it a very desirable area, so.
Any other questions, Mr. Shepherd?
I don't.
Thank you.
I thank you. You know, I would just, I think what it does, it brings up a pretty interesting thing. We have a dilemma here of like, okay, it's a, it's a higher end and to what extent do you want to incentivize or subsidize or whatever you want to, term you want to put on it, the higher end type homes. But beside from that, I think, and it would be a question for the four of you up here and Mayor Crawford, you in particular, would be, you know, when we, we have an opportunity here with houses that have an amenity and everything else, I would take you back to 2013 when the vote for the special assessments on Stone Lake were conducted. And at that time, it passed by a 5-0 vote. And I think, my question would be for Commissioners is, and I think you're all familiar with Stone Lake, you drive by there and I mentioned before there, it's really not developing out after three and a half years. My question would be if you knew, knowing what we know now and going, and say we made that decision back then knowing what we know now, who would, who would vote in favor of that, of those special assessments? I can tell you this, I was opposed to them at that time and I'm opposed to them now, so. Mayor, would you vote for those special assessments?
Well, right now I have a, I have a motion and a second on the table on this particular seven point three.
Does that mean you don't, you don't want to entertain any discussion on this?
I think we have a discussion coming up Wednesday on this whole issue.
I move we call a question.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
Need a second.
All right, maybe we can keep that. The calling of the question doesn't automatically stop debate, it prompts a vote and requires a two-thirds majority in order to prevail.
So I made the motion because I'd like to see if the majority want to continue this discussion now or at a future time. And let's get on and vote what that is, in my opinion.
Well, if, do I have to ask for an overruling of the chair then, since the chair ruled to end debate?
My motion can die for lack of a second, right?
Yes, it is, it does require a second and the only point I would make, I don't believe the chair was possibly aware of the two-thirds vote requirement when the chair initially responded to the calling of the question, so I think it'd be best to, if there is a second on that motion, then it'd be a matter of proceeding to a, the motion to call a question is not subject to debate, does take a second and does take a two-thirds majority vote.
Is there a second to the motion? Call a question? Okay, motion dies.
Okay, I think that.
Chair on.
I think that the discussion is relevant. We're talking about lots that are in an equal and/or similar price range with Stone Lake, with the River Run, with Cedar Ridge, with a lot of other subdivisions, some of them that have a lot of lots left over and some of them that don't. And Stone Lake being one of them, and I can appreciate that some of you would not like to answer the question, but I think it, I think it's a good question. Commissioner Hardy, if you had an opportunity to vote on Stone Lake today, knowing what you know, that it's, they're not selling and the city's left holding the bag on a $1.4 million in infrastructure, that there are cracks in the concrete and they're, the catch basins are silting up and are going to need to be, have maintenance done on them, would you vote for approving special assessments on Stone Lake, yes or no?
Absolutely not.
Commissioner Davis? Knowing what you know now?
Yeah, I'm going to give you a vague answer only because.
A vague answer is an answer.
All my, all my thought processing is tied up with this motion. I think they're two different developments, different locations.
Well, we're, we're looking to put X amount of more lots on the market that is not, that are not selling at a rate that the market will absorb that. And that was my question to staff and.
So in that case, we should take that in consideration for this development on its own, on its own merit.
Well, I think that when you're talking about, do you, in the issuance of special assessment financing, should you, should we as a board consider at all market factors that involve how many, how many lots are out there and what our financial exposure would be of having too many of one type of product out on the market that we have financing on? That's the question, because we're looking at putting X, I mean, what's the number? 17 more lots on the market? That we're helping to finance?
That's been my contention that until we have the strategic plan in line with the development plan, it's hard to make decisions on special assessments. And we're still in the midst of that discussion.
Correct.
Aside from this issue, you know, some development, you know, some areas of development in the city I could see are probably going to naturally reach their conclusion. Stone Lake is probably not one of those, it looks like it's headed in that direction, maybe it's going to be a late bloomer, who knows? But I think this is an entirely different one. The issue of the inventory of lots is something that probably hadn't considered as much, you know, when looking at the merits of this particular. Now, that inventory was for lots in that price range or just lots total?
I think the discussion's lots in the price range and when you think about the subdivisions, you've got River Run, no question, I think that's in there. Highland Meadows, Hamlet. River Run, the last number we showed was about 28. Again, that may be off a little bit because our numbers from that study session were not timed exactly till today. Highland Meadows, Hamlet, about 26. Stone Lake has a mixture, I'm not really sure how many fit into the higher price range there. And Cedar Ridge, Cedar Ridge has, I know there's, I believe there's land that can be developed into a Phase Two, it's not been brought through the system yet. So in the Phase One, which is the main street that goes through, I don't, I don't have a count. My recollection, my vague recollection is that most of the, most of the lots have homes, there might be some that are vacant, but the guess of the question is, could you in the future have a second phase of Cedar Ridge? I think the answer is, yeah, you could. I think that there'll be a time you probably will, you don't today. So you're really looking at today, at River Run, at Highland Meadows, Hamlet and certain number of lots in Stone Ridge, which I'd have to defer to Gary or Mike if they know better than me which of those lots are intended for 350 and higher homes versus anything lower than that. I think there is a mixture, I just don't know what it is. So I don't want to misspeak on that.
The best description I could probably give you are the, the lots that back up to the lake are the higher acreage, higher dollar lots. The lots on the opposite side of the street and away from the lake are more typical, average priced lots. Number wise, I don't know that I can tell you off the top of my head.
Because I believe in our discussions and in the housing survey, you know, there was also a cutoff point in that, that it would be an absolute hard number, but you know, price of housing above which, unless it was just some extraordinary circumstances, you wouldn't necessarily have to entertain the issue of special assessments.
Yeah, you're, if Salina housing strategic plan. Yeah, your, your, uh, if Salina, house, housing strategic plan indicates, and this is, I'll just reference it for the record, but it's table three point two on page fifty-three under development policies, and it does reference the price range, the high price range in that is above two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand, higher than two hundred and fifty, and says price point alone, private financing, partial special assessment if contiguous, it shows fifty percent of development cost if it's contiguous. A full special assessment if mixed with other housing price points and or uses, uh, and full development incentive package in reinvestment areas. So I don't think you're, in this case, you're not in a reinvestment area. Uh, I don't, you don't have any mixed uses as part of the developments. Single family housing, pretty straightforward that way, so you would, if you're going to use the guidance from your, your housing study, you would be in the fifty percent development cost range because of it being contiguous, I would think, so that's how, that's the guidance it would provide.
The price point, wasn't there some, uh, talk of the price point of the homes as well as being above a certain number?
Yeah, two hundred and fifty thousand.
Two hundred and fifty, that, that would not require special assessments.
Well, you're not required anyway, just keep in mind.
Right.
This is just a recommendation, but it shows for above two hundred and fifty thousand, which is what it calls the high price range. It shows the partial special assessment if contiguous.
Right, right. Well, and contiguous, in my mind, shouldn't even be one of the elements that it's considered because we require that anyway.
Yeah, I'm just saying that's what it says.
The other, the other part that I'm, I'm concerned about though is that these, these homes are not above two hundred and fifty thousand, they're above three hundred and fifty thousand. They go up to a million dollars perhaps, and, uh, and that circumstance alone, I think that that's enough to justify, not needing special assessments. We're, we're talking about a whole different audience, uh, when we're, when we're talking about lots in this price range. And, and, and in my mind, uh, special assessments are not, uh, a commodity that is unending. There's, there, there's got to be a, a line there at some point where, you know, you, you issued all the special assessments, that you can as a city, and I believe that we should treat them as a limited resource, and use them where, uh, they can do us the most good. Uh, if they can provide us s- s- the homes that are more the, the type home that we would, would like to encourage, uh, being built in a certain part of the city that we'd like to see develop. And, uh, and this particular development is, is a very nice development. In fact, if I had a choice between the two, Stone Lake and this one, I probably would have preferred this one, if we were going to choose one, but, um, in my mind, uh, I would, I would rather use our, uh, tool of special assessments where it can, uh, really provide us more good.
And you know, you, you could even go so far as to say, well, if there are eleven people who want to build one million dollar homes in Salina, chances are that's eleven new businesses in town with so many jobs. But I think the issue of, of the inventory that we have, in town is, is already, needs to be, be considered. I mean, if it's a very, yeah, I'm, I'm more partial towards developments that are already, surrounded by city development. Sooner or later, it seemed natural that's going to fill in. Uh, you know, so that to me is, is a, is a plus. But, no, we don't need a large glut, and I don't know the rate at which these lots are being absorbed. Or what would be the anticipated time it would take to even use half of, of that inventory up.
Are we suggesting Stone Lake is in default? I'm, I'm just suggesting that if Stone Lake's any indication about the, uh, number of lots that we have available and then the absorption rate, that, uh, it's, it's going to be a while before Stone Lake is. The owners of Stone Lake have made a conscious decision to keep their lot prices high. If they wanted to sell those, wanted to build on them at a faster rate, they would lower their prices, that's a market activity, and, and so they, they engaged with their customers that make that, that happen. It's not our place to, to try to circumvent the market. While, while they are making those decisions, or not making those decisions, our roads are going to pot.
I, I would say that that is not how they represented their approach when they asked the city to finance their development.
Well, they phased it, and it's not that all of that has, has been platted, that was just the first piece of it.
I'm speaking just of the part that they put special assessment.
But I think that's within their decision-making realm to deal with it the way they wanted to.
Right, and I'm talking about. Right, we should stay out of their business. I, I agree with you a hundred percent, we should have never financed it. We should have stayed out of their business.
Well, I disagree with you there.
So you agree that we.
Question was that if I'd have been asked to vote for those special assessments at that time, I would have, and I would, would again now if I were hearing that.
And you think it's.
Because I believe that the city provides us as a service and everybody deserves the same amount of service, and it's not our, our place to, the staff takes care of whether there are too many lots out there by the plating process, not us giving the special assessments.
That, that is not a function, the special assessments are not governed by the planning process, they're governed by this body.
They are, but I think once it's past the plating process.
Let me, let me, let me just ask, maybe for clarification, because maybe I misunderstood. But you said that they're making a conscious decision to hold these lots off the market while we're, while they're, there's wear and tear on them.
And they, I'm just saying they may be, but it's up, up to their decision.
But we on the road, the taxpayers on the roads, so we're responsible.
Paying for it.
We're responsible for the maintenance.
The owners of the, the lots are paying for the road.
Would you agree with this statement that the, that the purpose of providing special assessment financing and it's, and it's, written in the, in the policy is to encourage growth, but that the overall purpose is to say, it helps to facilitate the income, facilitate revenues coming in from the property tax on those properties? Would you, would that be a fair assessment?
Those fees are being paid and.
Well, no, 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 tax, the taxes, th- those lots are valued at a hundred dollars apiece. We're not collecting property taxes on vacant lots.
But those specials are being paid.
Well, the streets are being paid, but they'll hopefully over the, over the next few years, cover half of what the maintenance may cost, and we still have to pay for services for police, fire and everything else out there. So they're not paying for themselves their tax dollars, because we're collecting zero taxes.
If there's no houses there, there aren't a lot of fire trucks and police going out there.
Well, that, that's beside the point.
It's bare ground.
That is beside the point, but here's, here's, so you would, you would say that it's a good policy for us to build roads, that maybe sit there vacant for five, six or so years, knowing that they're not going to sell, because I'm sure that they would probably.
There are, there are homes going in there.
They would probably love to sell some homes out there, is my guess.
And when they lower the price, they will.
Yeah, okay. Mayor, would you, did, did you, are you with Commissioner, or Vice Mayor Ryan, you would vote on that as well?
Continue with John's school here, but, uh, yeah.
Well, some of us did go to school for this call.
It'd really be, well, it'd really be nice if we knew these things in advance, but we don't always know those things. And we didn't in, when Stone Lake went in.
And that's why I said knowing.
They weren't going to build faster.
Knowing then what you know now.
Pretty well built up.
Knowing then what you know now, would you have, would you approve?
I'm not sure what I would do, but this is like Commissioner Davis said, this is a different topic entirely, this is a different.
Could I ask, city manager, or, should we be smarter on this issue?
Comes down to a few factors.
Wednesday, after, is it Wednesday we have our special? Should by sunset Wednesday evening we be smarter on this?
I, I would, I would love to optimistically believe that after Wednesday you will have a clear answer on this question, I'm not sure you will. Keep that in mind. Um, I think it comes down to a few factors. Okay, the first factor is, is, do you want to see, uh, new houses built in these developments, fringe, and this is somewhat fringy, a little bit still, uh, but yet finishing out phases. That's the first question, same question we asked before in a study session. The second question is, is, uh, what is the capacity, I'm not speaking just to this, I'm speaking in general, what is the capacity, of the developers to, uh, develop these lots without special assessments? And three, do you believe there is, with special assessments and wherever you come from to get to that point, do you believe that there is a condition that would, uh, kind of lead you to, uh, to an enhanced risk of defaults? Defaults that would not be absorbed in the community. If you have a default by itself, that's going to mean we don't get our taxes for three years. If someone comes and buys the lot for the tax price, it's lower than the tax plus, the, the special plus the, uh, purchase price. But, and so if the, if our, in our local economy, if it's absorbed, if someone buys it, yeah, we carry the debt service for three years and then we're made whole. If, uh, the, if it's not absorbed by our market, then we're going to be stuck holding that. And I mentioned in the study session, presentation before, we didn't see that, we haven't so far seen that, probably going back to the, I think it was the late eighties, mid to late eighties. We didn't see it through the recession. I can't, I don't have a crystal ball, so I can't tell you whether that would happen with this subdivision, a different subdivision, and at what price point, but you have, you're not going to ever get perfect information. When I was in college, I was introduced to a game, it was called SimCity. And when you played SimCity, it was kind of fun, you put the little blocks in, you call it residential, commercial, industrial, you attach electricity, you built roads and all that, you could bulldoze it real fast. And what happened is, is there was a newspaper, and the newspaper came out and it told you exactly what the people wanted, and in that particular case, no offense to Mr. Ryan, he does a great job trying to cover us, but that was considered fact for the game. In other words, in that game, if it said, citizens want a police station, you knew citizens wanted a police station, it's really that simple. So you, you had that. Our information is not that exact. It's just simply isn't, so you have to take the totality of the, of the information, the conditions that you see in front of you, local economy, total number of lots, uh, capacity to develop, or some things you don't know, um, number of lots in the, in the price point, which is what you're talking about right now, desire to see the development, uh, potential impact in your, true impact in your mind of issuing specials, your philosophy on specials or not. You have to put all those together and figure out what you want to do, and I, and honestly, I can give you the factors, I can't help you really much more than that. I think you have to weigh those in your own mind and then have your discussion, decide how you want to handle it. And then we're here to help you any way we can.
Because, you know, uh, my opinion would be that we don't all need to agree, on whether we think a particular project merits special assessments. But I think we all need to be aware of which factors need to be considered in however we make our own personal decision. And that's what I want to get out of the, the special sessions that we're going to have. Uh, and we have to decide, you know, to what extent is this housing policy, the housing study, going to be included in our policy or decision making. We don't all have to agree, but you know, the factors such as the inventory. Yeah, in the back of my mind, I knew there were lots, but it, it was not necessarily, you know, foremost. And we may treat each one of these and we may weight them differently, uh, but, you know, if, if there are twelve things that should be considered in making these, I'd like to know that all five of us are considering all twelve of those. Uh, again, we don't have to agree, at least we know what things should be considered in, in making a decision.
Commissioners, another factor that hasn't been discussed here that you did discuss with the River Trail, um, it was, is, is that, and it, and it kind of comes out of this, the housing policy as well. The housing policy says high is above two fifty. That's what you approved, you don't have to, you don't have to, it's not law or anything like that, it's just how it's categorized, and it talks about fifty percent if it's contiguous. Again, we don't have to agree, but that's, that's what you got and you agreed to, to approve that, so I call, I consider it a starting point for discussion more than anything else. You have information, you can, you can figure out what you want to do. Uh, the point of this is, is that, uh, you, you've probably been in this conversation from the perspective of a hundred percent specials. You don't have to be, you could be in it from fifty percent, thirty percent, forty percent, seventy percent. I think River Trail ended up at seventy is my recollection. Uh, that's, that's a factor too, if there's any, if you believe there's any role of specials whatsoever, you don't have to be at a hundred percent. Now, the applicant may want you to be at a hundred percent and he can represent that if he'd like to, but, that's just another factor, rather than an all or nothing, you have that in between you can discuss as well, so, but it depends. Really, the first question is, is do you believe that you should, uh, continue to entertain the, the conversation of specials at all? And if the answer is yes, then you're into what percent and, and how does that work for the applicant and is there common ground?
And as far as the housing state, you know, we have, uh, like bits and pieces of our constitution, we, we, hold it up as gospel policy when it fits and we reject it when it doesn't. We even yet to decide what we're, how we're going to use, the housing study, uh, because once you start using it, you can't not use it when someone else comes up and wants to use a certain part of it. So we really need to decide to what extent, is it truly just going to be a recommendation, a document we could have pulled up on Google, or is it something that this is forming part of our, our policy? Yeah, my personal suggestion would be that we delay discussing this for about another two weeks, certainly until we have our special meeting. Until after we have our special meeting later this week. I don't know if that, I guess I can look down the row and look at eyes.
Motion in a second.
But there isn't another motion on the floor, that's true. Wait, where is it? The original motion's on the floor.
Vice Mayor motion, you were the second.
Well, this is just a feasibility study, so they're not asking for specials in this, just the, the opportunity to study it.
Yeah, we're going to put, we're going to put staff to work on this thing.
That study's costing somebody some money.
Yes.
Staff.
Cost the city.
Yes.
How much time and money does it cost? Our time and slash, or money.
This subdivision had to be partially completed on the feasibility side with the water and stormwater already completed, so he's working as, Dan mentioned earlier, just on the wastewater as well as.
Wastewater and street, um, do you have an engineer hired yet at all to?
It's complete.
Okay, so basically.
I've got estimates.
Okay, so he's got the estimates.
Mr. Stack.
Pretty much done then.
So it's, this, this one is one of the easier ones, because we've got the estimates and, and the engineering is complete, and so we just have to basically update the estimates or make sure he's got the latest estimates and plug the numbers in, and then we'll get a per lot cost, basically, of what it would be. So I can't say it's easy, but it's one of the more easy, easier ones, I guess, at this point, since it's not creating anything from scratch.
So you wouldn't hate us if you did, if you did the work and it didn't go anywhere?
That's the way it goes, it's alright, that's just life.
We're not allowed to hate you.
No worries.
Well, every four years you are.
And that's why I say if there's, if there's any contemplation of any level of specials, you want to have this piece done. If there isn't, that's the threshold question for you today, really. If there isn't, then there's no use in going forward. If there is, we can contemplate the percentage, uh, application of specials, between now and the time that you get the numbers back, uh, and I do think, I would expect that the applicant would probably have some thoughts on that, and that might be part of the conversation if that's where you go.
I have a threshold, and, and if that's all it is, and the work's not difficult, onerous to do, I would see no problem, but, but that should not infer any obligation or suggestion of how we might vote later. It's just my opinion.
Well, it sounds to me like it's pretty well finished as far as feasibility study.
Yeah, I think we could get the numbers back to you in a month, month or so, sometime September, probably, pretty easy.
Even if we vote to authorize staff to prepare the, which is the motion, then, um, what you're saying is it's not going to cause a whole lot of extra work.
Wayne Nelson is my staff engineer who does these quite a bit, he's back there and he's not surprised to hear this request from Mr. Shepherd and, kind of saw it coming years ago, so it's kind of a phased approach and it's pretty typical, I'm not surprised we can get it done.
So, I still have a motion and a second on the floor to authorize staff to prepare an engineering feasibility report, and resolution of advisability for phase two of the Grand Prairie Edition for future consideration, for future consideration for the city commission. That was second, motion was made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Nope.
Okay, four to one, alright. Motion carried. Okay, seven point four.
Item seven point four, resolution number one six dash seven three eight eight, authorizing the mayor to execute the first amendment to the Crossland Construction Company Field House Construction Contract, confirming that the builder's risk insurance shall be provided by Crossland Construction Company rather than the City of Salina.
Mr. Greg.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, um, as the city clerk noted, this is an amendment to the contract, and I would distinguish that from it being a change order for the contract. There may be the change orders in the future, but this is not that. Additionally, then, there's one other item that came up in, in discussion with Crossland Construction from the time that this, uh, staff report was distributed to you. So you should have at your seat, uh, an amended blue sheet and an amended, uh, contract with the changes highlighted in gray. So essentially, there are two issues that the contract amendment addresses. Uh, one is builder's risk insurance, which builder's risk insurance provides protection against damages to buildings and material while the building is under construction. Uh, the city staff, um, did an extensive review of kind of standard documents between, uh, American Institute of Architects and the, uh, I used to be able to roll the other one off the tip of my tongue, but there's an engineering equivalent to AIA. And we took a, um, comprehensive stance that we felt it was appropriate to, um, for the city to provide builder's risk insurance, rather than task the builders. than task the builders with doing that. And the rationale was that we felt like we could get it at a cheaper expense, it wouldn't, it would lessen the bid cost. Um, having said that, in dealing with Crossland Construction, they pointed out that they carry a blanket policy nationwide with coverage amounts substantially higher than, than we might purchase, and at significantly less cost to them and at no cost to us as it relates to this particular bid. So, uh, we asked them to provide their builder's risk coverage for our review. Uh, we found it to be acceptable, not only to us in terms of what we had in the way of expectations, but also the new market tax credit lenders. And we confirmed that that was not an added cost as part of their bid. It's just kind of their, uh, way of doing business, and they, they did not provide any type of bid discount on the basis that we would be providing builder's risk since they would carry it anyway. So, um, by amending the contract, taking advantage of the fact that they provide the builder's risk and not having to purchase it on our own, that actually represents a savings. I can't quantify for you the savings since we didn't go to the market and price builder's risk for this particular project. That was the item that was in the staff report that was distributed. The second item that's addressed in the, the highlighted portion is that Crossland, as they've become more familiar with the new market tax credit aspects of the project and the role of the leveraged lender and the, and the Qualic B, expressed some concern. They, they were aware that the contract would need to be assigned from us as the city to the Qualic B. They consented to that as part of their bid. Um, but as they became more aware of the new market tax credit aspects, they had concerns about the sales tax exemption and whether it would be honored at the point that it was under Qualic B ownership. Um, provided them quite a bit of information with respect to the industrial revenue bond financing and the nature of that, as well as sales tax exemption from the state of Kansas. And they were very accommodating. They basically said, in all honesty, we got burned on a project not that long ago where we didn't do our due diligence and lost the sales tax exemption, and we ended up having to eat it on that project. We're just trying, we believe everything you're telling us, but we're trying to protect our own interest in all this. And so the requested amendment that is the second item was some language added to the document, which I'll get to in a second, that basically acknowledges the intention is to assign the contract to the Qualic B. The Qualic B is, in our opinion, going to be sales tax exempt, but in the event that our expectations, our assurances to Crossland don't come to pass in some fashion, that then the added expense of the sales tax is eligible for a change order as part of the project. I would tell you that staff has worked diligently on this issue to get to this point, and we, we felt like we cleared this hurdle a while ago from our vantage point in terms of industrial revenue bond financing, securing, ensuring that the project would be both property tax and sales tax exempt. So this is kind of a belt and suspenders approach in reassuring Crossland, but it seemed like a reasonable request. And frankly, they've been very accommodating so far in terms of working through all the other new market tax credit aspects of this project. So from staff's perspective, we're confident, sales tax is not in jeopardy. This is simply a means to reassure them. Um, in terms of conformance with the strategic plan, uh, this project in and of itself is compliant with our strategic plan goals, everything from high-quality services to downtown redevelopment. From a fiscal note, there is no anticipated cost with either of these items. And I did mention that I would, I would go over the Second Amendment. If you turn to the Amendment to the Construction Contract, the new Section Three, um, I won't read it to you in its entirety, but it basically, both parties acknowledge that we intend to sign the agreement, that we expect that it will be exempt from, from sales taxes. But notwithstanding the foregoing, if any of the purchases become taxable, then they, we would, they would be eligible to file for a change order to cover that unanticipated cost on their behalf. If we knew this project was going to be taxable from day one, that would be a cost that would have been in the bids and something that we would fund anyway. So having said that, we've identified three options for your consideration. One is to approve the resolution as presented. Uh, the second one is to postpone consideration. Uh, if you needed additional information for your future consideration. And thirdly, you could choose not to approve the, the resolution and the amendment. From the builder's risk standpoint, um, the result of that action would be that we would go out and purchase builder's risk insurance at our expense. From the sales tax exemption aspect, that might actually stall Crossland's proceeding with the project until we could find some other way to reassure them that the project is sufficiently sales tax exempt. So in light of that, staff recommends that you approve Resolution 167388, authorizing the mayor to execute the First Amendment to the Crossland Construction Company contract. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions?
The question about the tax exempt, the concern they have about tax exemption, what is the, at what point do we feel we're completely out of the woods with Board of Tax Appeals on tax exempt? Any hiccup?
Well, the Board of Tax Appeals is property tax oriented. From a sales tax perspective, we have filed for and received a property, or an exemption certificate from the Kansas Department of Revenue. And so our bond counsel tells us, between the industrial revenue bond financing, the fact that we filed declaring that it's industrial revenue bond project and that financing, that it is sales tax exempt. The, if, if we'd done the same process for a commercial prospect, um, and, you know, that was company XYZ, we would be sales tax exempt and confident of it. The Qualic B is a little bit unique in that it's kind of an arms-length entity of ourselves, but we're in the exact same position. We filed for and received our sales tax exemption from the Department of Revenue.
Okay. So there's.
It, it really is.
When they say an abundance of cotton.
Yes, yes.
It's, it's quite abundant.
Um, and I would tell you, too, that, um, you know, we, all of this played itself out at the end of the week last week. And so our bond counsel is very helpful in providing information, but it was just kind of an email chain. There, there wasn't a lot of paperwork. I didn't go to the Department of Revenue and ask them to opine, I'm not sure that they would, on something like this. So this was a way to reassure them.
So nobody's got a say that can come along and say, well, wait a second, timeout. There's nobody, okay.
Yeah, the, the other thing to note, too, is the IRB is also a tool that does, is our Plan A tool that addresses a property tax exemption as well. So, uh, we don't have to be reliant upon the Board of Tax, or Court of Tax Appeals, I guess, is what they are now again. Uh, although we, we think in the end that we should get a favorable ruling. We don't have to because that's what the IRB does as well. It helps wrap it up in that, so you can give ourselves a property tax exemption, and for the most part, bringing it back to the same position we would have been otherwise. So it helps us in both ways.
Okay.
Those exemptions are statutory under the IRB process.
Okay.
It's not a discretionary aspect.
Okay.
Okay, any more questions?
Shall we entertain a motion to approve?
Madam Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 16-7388, authorizing the mayor to execute the First Amendment to, and Second, or does, both amendments?
This actually constitutes one amendment.
Okay.
We need to amend the description of that amendment to include the sales tax exemption assurance as well.
Okay.
That's the same.
Right, two.
Same one, isn't it?
Right. Um, first, to execute the First Amendment to the Crossland Construction Company Fieldhouse Construction Contract, confirming that builder's risk, risk insurance shall be provided by Crossland Insurance Company rather than the City of Salina, and to add the provision, should there be?
Sales tax.
Sales tax added to the construction cost of the.
Yeah, it's eligible for change order, would be my description.
To be eligible for change order.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Okay. Anybody have other business? Any other business? All right.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
So moved, and we're adjourned.